Take the roll.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Marlene Batista.
Here.
Okay. Chris Brogan.
Here.
Chair Cafarelli.
Yep, right here.
Jay Gross.
Here.
Pam Iacono.
Here.
John Matola.
Here.
John Winn.
Present.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and now we go to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, under attack, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Someday soon, we'll be together in person and get that in unison, so appreciate your indulgence in the meantime. So then, moving right along to item number four on the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the January 27th meeting, and are there any comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. A move by Chris Brogan, second by Pam. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So it looks like it passes unanimously, I'm affirmative as well. And then we're gonna move on to, sorry.
One abstention, I was not present, although I did.
I moved, okay. I moved through that too quickly there, sorry about that, Marlene.
That's okay.
I'm glad you're back and well, so it's good to see you, I should add.
Thank you.
And I will note, too, you remind me, I see the fair TVs on and they're broadcasting, so again, thank you, thank you for doing that as well. So then, moving on to item number five, then the town governance issue. I'm going to, we have a very, very robust and distinguished panel that Council Medneck has put together for us, once again, outdone himself, and thank you for that. And so, look forward to him making the introductions and giving us a little bit more background about this evening and such an important topic that we're gonna be learning about. Steve?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to be here. Tried to put together a panel, I see some of the panelists are here, and I'm gonna alter things a little bit because the first selectman of Newtown, Dan Rosenthal, has a Board of Finance meeting to go to, it's budget season, and he has a 7:30 meeting, and so what I was going to do is I was going to have everybody on the panel participate, and then we'd do Q and A at the end, but I'm going to alter it slightly by asking the first selectman to go first. And so, let me just explain quickly, and I'll try to go very quickly so that we get, maximize our time with Dan. I tried to give you a mix of speakers tonight. Most of the towns tend to be populations, or some of the towns tend to be population centers that are pretty close to Fairfield, particularly Hampden is right on board with Fairfield in terms of population, as well as Manchester, and New Britain's a little higher, about 10,000 higher. But I also included, well Bristol, Mayor Zappo Zassu is here as a town manager, was also mayor, we'll probably talk a little bit about the two different forms of government, is about the same size as Fairfield as well. And then I've gone to a couple of smaller communities because I viewed them as very innovative and very interesting in the way they conduct their governments. And so that's why you're gonna see the first selectman Cosgrove, I see him here tonight, thank you for being here. Welcome to Fairfield. And Dan Rosenthal. So let me introduce Dan from Newtown. I've tried to give you different forms of government, and his form of government is very interesting because if you look at the listing, it looks like a Board of Selectmen Town Meeting form of government. But when you actually look at their charter, they have an interesting structure with the Board of Selectmen, a Legislative Council, and kind of a petition to referendum. Although I think it's a mandatory petition for budget, or there's a mandatory referendum for budget. So it's a very interesting form of government, so let me introduce Dan by saying that he was first elected as first selectman in 2017, and re-elected to a third term as part of the Serve America movement. He's been involved in local government for a long time. Was an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission when he was probably a child out of college, and a member of the Legislative Council in the late 1990s, early part of the century, member of the Board of Police Commissioners, and has been very active in his community at the Rotary Club, the Rotary Foundation Youth Lacrosse, where he has been a coach, one of our other speakers has been an assistant football coach, so we have some common ground here. Dan was in the private sector with Bronson Point Management and Pequot Capital Management for a number of years. And most importantly, from my perspective, he spent a little time in Fairfield, at Fairfield University. He was 20 years behind me, so we did not know each other at school. And, but he went to Fairfield, so he may have some anecdotes about Fairfield being a stag. And almost importantly, is I've known his dad for a long time, one of, I think, one of the great elected officials in Connecticut, Herb Rosenthal, who was the first selectman of Newtown, and a Fairfield grad, class of 68. So somebody actually older than me. So it's my pleasure to introduce Dan Rosenthal. You're on mute, Dan.
Thanks, Steve, and thank you for having me. I do have an affinity for Fairfield. I recall when I was there that we had a couple students run for the RTM, so I don't know if they still do that, but I remember, I think maybe two students got elected to the RTM in the mid 90s. So I remember, and love Fairfield immensely, so you guys have a great town. So I guess a little bit on our former government, Steve touched on it, so you know Newtown, we have a Board of Selectmen form of government, so you know, the Board of Selectmen, it's a three-member Board of Selectmen. And based in 1975, the town, so at that time, we had a Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance form of government. And they did away with the Board of Finance in a charter revision in 75 and formed a Legislative Council, at that time, they formed an 18-person Legislative Council, I think they determined quickly that that was a little too large. And since about 1980, we've had a 12-person Legislative Council. So they're responsible for ordinance making, it's actually by district. So if I liken that to a town like Fairfield, which you're by population, you're about twice the size of Newtown, we're 28,000, you're actually a little bit more than twice, I think. The, you know, we have three districts in town, so they're basically four, you can elect, you know, four council people from each district. There's minority representation rules, so no more than three from any party per district. So they're responsible, they're the chief fiscal body for the town, and responsible for ordinance making. Around 2001, we did a charter revision. There was, you know, there was an interest in bringing back a Board of Finance, really, you know, I think the interest in bringing it back was as a policymaking body rather than a body to sort of vote on budgets and transfers appropriations. What we ended up getting, you know, because of a whole convoluted story that I won't waste a lot of time on, because it was petitioned onto the ballot, we actually have a Board of Finance that's more of an advisory form, they do have some teeth, you know, so for example, if they make a budget reduction, it requires a supermajority of the council to restore funding, you know, as we go through the budget process. But, so there's some debate now, we're actually going through charter revision as to whether or not we want to keep that. My feeling is, we should keep it and make it solely focused on policy, so setting guideposts for the town, you know, debt policy, you know, budget growth, things like that, but really not be too involved in actual budget line items, and really just focused as a policy body, as I think it was originally intended. So I think they should refine it some. But I think the council form of government has served the town quite well, we did a charter revision in 2016, and we took away the town meeting. So now, any capital expenditure over a million five has to go to the voters. So every year, at budget time, based on our capital improvement plan, any item that we're intending to do that's in excess of a million five, we basically automatically send to the ballot with our budget. So, school roof, I mean, it could be any capital expenditure over a million five. And then in our charter, we authorize the council to be able to spend up to the equivalent of one mil, so for us, one mil right now is about 3.4 million. So if we have capital projects that are less than 1.5, and the cumulative total of them are of course less than 3.4 million, the council's authorized to appropriate them in a given fiscal year. So, you know, in any given budget season, you know, we have our education budget, it's a bifurcated budget, you vote on even, you vote on the budget separately, and then there could be three or four capital projects on the ballot. So, you know, it's rare that we ever have petitions for referendum because it's basically handled every year in April. But I think it's, you know, I think having, you know, I think we should start considering the town man, you know, I won't get into that because Steve is, you know, gonna have folks that can talk more eloquently about it, but you know, I think we should consider moving to a town manager at some point, but I think, you know, at present, you know, the Board of Selectmen form of government, you know, I think is, you know, works pretty well for us because it's, you know, it's a smaller Board of Selectmen than some towns. I guess like, easier maybe to go to questions, or were there other things you wanted me to hit on, Steve? But you're muted, Steve.
I was trying to be polite by being muted, so. Yeah, I think so, Mr. Chairman, if members of the commission have any questions for the first selectman, this might be a good time.
This is Jay, Jay Gross, I have a question.
Sure.
Hi, Dan, thank you very much for participating tonight.
My pleasure.
Two questions. One, what was the process that you went through, how did you establish the spending limits? What?
I think that they, I think that when, so the idea of moving away from the town meeting, I think there was a feeling that you know, small groups of people could get together and spend large sums of money. You know, you could always petition the town meeting to a referendum, but, you know, you could have a a large appropriation, so I think what they were trying to do, I think, was pick a number by saying the equivalent, so our charter refers to the equivalent of one mil, you could make it two mils. Obviously, the dollar equivalency changes year over year based on your grand list and everything else. But I guess they felt that, you know, using 1.5 in a town like Fairfield, is that, do I think it's a little low for us? I think it's probably a little low for us, I think, maybe the, maybe it's a little tight in terms of those dollars, but because we were transitioning from having town meeting on everything, it felt like, you know, I think they were just trying to feel their way through what the right spot was in terms of, you know, spending limits. But I think, you know, our charter specifically says a million five as far as, you know, a single capital expenditure. It just refers to one mil for the council's spending authority.
Okay, and those limits are hardwired into the town charter. It's not something that's, oop, we just lost Dan. It's, those are hardwired into the charter, it's not something that is referred outside of the charter so that you can't really change it.
Correct, so one thought, I mean, again, I think that our charter, you know, and it's, is way too long, I mean, it's longer than the Constitution. I think that we should do, again, I think it's just preference over the years by charter revision commissions, I think we should do more by ordinance. So you could always have that, you know, delegated to your, your, you know, if you created a council, or your RTM, or whatever, by ordinance to change the amounts, but ours are hardwired.
Okay, by the way, you're not the only one that has a town charter larger than the US Constitution, so you're not alone. Second question is, what do you view as the main benefits you've experienced as a result of moving to the former government you're in?
Well, you know, I think that, Lord knows, we have a lot of government, you know, if you, you know, we have a six-member, you know, a three-member Board of Selectmen, six-member Board of Finance, and 12-member council, so I always joke that, you know, if I wanna get something done, you better be passionate about it because you have to go through a fairly large sausage factory. But, you know, with a lot of opinions and everything else, but I think that there's, you know, a lot of eyeballs on things, so I think that from a cultural standpoint, because of the number of folks involved, I think we've had fairly steady planning, you know, where you don't have elections come in and sweep everybody out, and, you know, go in a different direction relative to planning, I think there's some stability around how we've approached things, I think that we've yielded, you know, we have a AAA rating with S and P, you know, I think a lot of that comes at the fact that we have those three layers, so while there is, like I said, some pressure, mostly from the council, you know, the Legislative Council, who established our latest charter revision commission to get rid of Board of Finance, I think they just assumed do it themselves. I think the town has been better served since we've had a Board of Finance because prior to that, it was delegated to a subcommittee of the Legislative Council, all the policymaking. And I just think you wind up with an extraordinary amount of meetings, you know, you have the council by charter meets twice a month. So now if you create a finance subcommittee, or ordinance subcommittee, there's how many meetings are we gonna go to in a month, I'm sure you all meet with a lot of frequency, and if you're doing that year in, year out, I think things tend to drift a little bit. So I think having a Board of Finance that's a little more focused on the policy side of things, even though that whatever policies they come with go to the Board of, go to the council to be ratified, I think that, you know, it's good to have people, you know, solely focused on that, so I think where the town achieved a lot of rating increases was really when that Board of Finance came back into being in, in and around, you know, 2001. Again, I think it was just because that ended up being, you know, sort of the singular focus rather than more of a distraction with the council.
Thank you, Dan.
We have, I appreciate you coming tonight. John Matola has been patiently waiting his turn, thank you.
No, thank you, and thanks for those questions. Can you just tell me, if I understood you correctly, so every year, your budget goes to the town for full voter approval?
Correct.
Is that what I heard?
Correct, so it's an automatic, automatic process, yes.
Is it, does it usually pass every year, or do you have to go back a few times?
Thankfully, I mean, there have been, I mean, going back a number of years, I think we've probably had eight or nine years, maybe 10, since a budget failed. So generally speaking, you know, we've had good success over the last, and I think that again, you know, I think spending has been fairly controlled, I mean, if we had a big outsized year, we might get a different result at referendum, but we've had pretty good success with it.
Okay. Can you just tell me a little bit, what kind of support does your legislative body get? And what I mean by that is, does it have a staff of any kind? Does it have office space, does it have a liaison, anything like that, how does that work?
No, they, you know, so the body will tend to, you know, they'll ask questions through the chair, and then the chair can rely on town staff, so we have obviously our town finance director, he fields most of the questions and aggregates things, and if there are questions that have to get asked of other department heads, we'll farm them out that way. But they don't have, you know, we have, they have use of a meeting room here in the building, but there's no permanent staff.
All right. How do you do your department head appointments?
Department.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, department head appointments are at my discretion, unless it's, you know, in the charter, so for example, our tax assessor requires appointment by the Board of Selectmen. So I would, you know, I would bring it to the Board of Selectmen, if there's a contract involved, so for example, we just hired a new police chief. I'm working on that contract now, that contract would have to go to our Board of Selectmen for approval once I have it negotiated, as do all labor contracts.
Do they serve at your pleasure, most of those appointments?
Yes, most of them. Most of them are at will, correct, I mean, police chief is a, is sort of a different breed, but all of our other department heads, other than tax collector and assessor, which have appointments associated with them. And I think that dates back to years and years ago, so back to the early 70s, those were elected positions in town. And I think when they took away the elected status, they went to an appointed one. So only those two go to the Board of Selectmen, we do have a clause in our charter where if I dismiss any employee, you know, any at-will employee, the employee can ask for a hearing before the Board of Selectmen, and of course, I can be there, but I can't run the hearing. So they do have the ability to go and see if they can convince everybody that I was wrong.
Do you, and just, I don't wanna hog the questions. Do you appoint, do you appoint your own legal counsel?
Yes.
How does that work in Newtown?
So the legal counsel is, you know, at the discretion of the first selectman. We use Cullen and Wolfe, and then it's ratified by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
But I, I, I appointed them when I first was elected in 2017. They were already our legal counsel, so there really was not much to do, I just, as a new first selectman, had to reauthorize that, I, we don't, our charter does not require that year over year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, and I think I see our vice chair, Chris Brogan, has a question, and then Pam, I think I saw.
Let me quick, hi, Chris Brogan, thank you. I'm curious, you mentioned that you should start consider moving to a town manager arrangement, I'd be curious, what is leading you to that thinking?
You know, I think that our political climate, for one, you know, I think that, I think Fairfield County, you know, it's interesting, I'm actually third generation first selectman, so my grandfather was actually the longest serving first selectman in Newtown. He served six terms from 75 to 87. My father served five, from 97 to 07, and I'm on my third, I guess I inherited the crazy gene. So if you look at the last 50 years, you know, after I finish this term, someone with the same last name will have served the town for about, for 28 years. And, look, Pat Lodra, my predecessor, she, you know, I think she's served the town admirably. I think we've had pretty good luck, but I think Fairfield County is overreliant on the corporate sector, you know, other parts of the state, I think, have started looking at either administrator or manager forms of government. You know, we have two-year terms. I think sort of sticking your finger in the air every two years, hoping that somebody comes forward that's competent, and I think as things become more complicated, you know, I did come out of the private sector, but you look at what basically is a popularity contest, and then you're handed the keys to a fairly big empire that, you know, there's contracts, there's, we've had big construction projects, and I think I'm well-served by staff, and I, you know, I'm focused, I mean, I, I think I've managed things well, but we're leaving a lot up to chance, and I think that the job, because again, it's short-term in nature, how many people, you know, I'm 50, you know, the job tends to lend itself more to somebody that's retired. And, you know, because most people can't step away from their private sector job and then, you know, do this for two years and go back to that, you know, it tends to be difficult, so it lends itself more to retirement, and I'm not sure that someone that's, you know, in their mid 60s or 70, really, you know, how many of them wanna step into politics and have your head put in a vise, so. You know, I do think that, while I've enjoyed it, I am sensitive to the fact that I don't see a big bench of people looking to take the job from me, and I, you look, I think part of it is things have gone well, but I think also, as I talk to people, even people that complain, they say, you know what, I wouldn't want to do your job, so I think we're relying on history too much to be our guide, because I think we've had pretty good success with the people that have served this town. But I am worried about what comes next, and I think to wait until you're in that position where it's slim pickings, now you're trying to put the wheels on the bus when, you know, you you could have done it with some foresight, and now you're trying to probably fix something that didn't go well for the town.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Pam, I think, have a question next.
Thank you, Pam Iacono. My question is, how does your Board of Selectmen operate? What is their, what are their roles and responsibilities in your, in your form of government?
So, I mean, basically, the executive function for the town, so I'm tasked with, you know, the day-to-day, you know, management of the town, employees, you know, making sure, you know, for all intents and purposes, the roads are plowed, the, you know, the trains run on time. They're really a check on my power, so, again, on the executive function, so around, you know, contracts, if we're acquiring a piece of land, they would have to authorize that as well. So it's, it's a part-time job, they have no, they don't get any compensation or anything for their role. But basically, you know, so contracts, land acquisitions, appropriations start with the Board of Selectmen, you know, they go through our Board of Finance and then the council. You know, the sale of land would also be something that I'd have to bring to the the selectmen to initiate the process, special appropriations, they'd also have to authorize that. So, you know, basically, my ability to spend money outside of what's authorized in a budget would have to, you know, go to the, go to the Board of Selectmen. I'm authorized, you know, our charter allows within a department, I can transfer up to $50,000. Anything over $50,000, I have to go through a transfer process through the Selectmen, Board of Finance, and Council. Any cross-department transfer, so if I moved money from Public Works, if I move a dollar from Public Works to Park and Rec, that would have to go through the whole process, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and Council. You know, and I think the idea behind that is you could put something innocuous, I could propose something that's sort of apple pie and motherhood in the budget, get the budget approved by the voters, and then quickly sweep money somewhere and create a position that nobody, you know, thought you would, so I think by, not that, not that I would do that, but again, it prevents somebody from, you know, getting something approved that everybody thinks is wonderful, and then using it to fund something that everybody wouldn't have thought was wonderful.
And so what are, are there, is there any differentiation roles and responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen versus your town council?
Yeah, so, so the Board of Selectmen is, again, strictly, you know, tend to be around, in some ways redundant, right, so when we vote on an appropriation, the council also has to vote on said appropriation. Some towns that have a Board of Selectmen form of government, Board of Finance, the Selectmen still retain ordinance-making authority, at one time, many years ago, Newtown had that. It now rests with our Legislative Council alone. So it's, so there are some things that I think originally, some powers that the Board of Selectmen had, that they no longer had. So I don't think it's a heavy lift having Selectmen, it's really just, I think, a check on the first selectman now.
Gotcha, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other commission members have questions? Well, they covered mine, too, so I do appreciate that. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Dan, who has to run to the Board of Finance as we speak, thank you very, very much.
My pleasure. If there are follow-ups, if there are follow-ups, you know, if you email me through the town website, I'm happy to circle back. Or reach out. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Luck to you all.
Thanks, Dan. If it's okay with the other speakers, what we're gonna do, if no one else has any meetings, Dan had the Board of Finance come up that he has to deal with, I'm going to ask everybody to give a little presentation, and we'll try to do a panel discussion with the remaining five of you, and if that's okay with everybody, it's I kind of asked everybody to do. The next person I want to introduce is from my neighborhood, where I live, in the New Haven area, from one of the prettiest towns in the state of Connecticut, from Branford, Connecticut, first selectman Jamie Cosgrove. He is a longtime, a lifetime Branford resident, from a very esteemed Branford family, was involved in his family construction. Um, was involved um, in his family construction business as a project manager, which is probably very good training for um, an elected official. Um, and was elected First Selectman in Branford in uh, in November of two thousand thirteen, after serving on the Board of Selectmen from uh, for two years, two eleven, two thousand eleven to two thousand thirteen. He also served on the Branford RTM, which is the legislative body of the town, for two years. And while on that, uh, on the RTM, he served on several committees, including administrative services, uh, and rules and ordinances. Uh, he's a member of the South Central Council of Governments. Um, uh, he's on their transportation committee, uh, their executive board and the Workf, Workforce Alliance Board. Uh, and um, um, he is, uh, you know, he's got a form of government, smaller town. It's an RTM form of government. What I thought was interesting, they have a very, very Spartan uh, charter, which I've talked to his council about. Um, and uh, I'm still learning about, but um, I thought there are some things that we could learn from Branford, since they are an RTM town, smaller obviously than Fairfield, but they also have a very uh, lean and mean RTM. And, and I thought um, uh, it would be useful to hear from uh, the First Selectmen. So it's my honor to introduce uh, Jamie Cosgrove.
Okay, well, thank you, uh. Pleasure to be here, thank you for that introduction. So the town of Branford in nineteen fifty-eight went through a charter revision, where we uh, went from a town meeting form of government to an RTM representative town meeting. Uh, just mentioned, we have a uh, a three-member Board of Selectmen, it's a two-year term here in Branford. Uh, we have a Board of, six-member Board of Finance, uh, which is, is, those members are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Uh, they serve three-year terms. And the, the First Selectman is ex officio of that board and only votes in a matter to break a tie. Uh, the RTM is a thirty-member body. Uh, the town of Branford is currently um, divided up into seven districts, and those thirty members are, can you hear me okay? Uh, okay, sorry. Uh, those thirty members are, you know, portioned through the uh, seven districts. Um, we do have minority representation uh, guar, guaranteed on the RTM, uh, as, as well as the Board of Selectmen. But on the RTM, we now putting up candidates, you can't put up more than two-thirds uh, of the number of uh, seats that that district holds. And from there, then it goes to the uh, top vote-getters for, uh, that have run for that district. Um, as I said, the, the RTM is divided up into uh, five, five subcommittees. And those subcommittees oversee uh, various aspects of town government, um, which is actually divided up into forty-four uh, departments, committees, uh, boards and commissions. Uh, so those are the forty-four uh, essentially budgets that make up our overall budget. We, just to go through the, the process, uh, um, the budget is developed through the First Selectmen's Office, working with department heads, uh, as well as uh, you know, the, as I mentioned, boards and commissions that may have small budgets, develop their budget. Those are presented to our Board of Finance, uh, to be in March. Uh, the Board of Finance has public hearings where they hear the presentations uh, for, uh, from each department head or chair of a Board or Commission that may have a budget. Um, they deliberate on the, the budgets they heard, and they make a recommended budget to, and they transmit that to the RTM. The RTM, uh, typically over the month of April will hear uh, their respective, each subcommittee will hear their respective budget. The uh, and then they'll make a recommendation to the full thirty-member body in, in, in the beginning of May. The RTM, uh, during that process cannot, uh, they can move dollars around, they can cut budgets, they can add items uh, to the budget, but they cannot increase the overall budget that was set by the Board of Fin, was, was set by the Board of Finance through their process. So um, they, like I said, they can change appropriations, cut, add to, um, introduce other items that may have not have been considered through the Board of Finance, but the overall budget cannot uh, exceed what the Board of Finance set. Uh, after the Board of Finance, or the RTM, excuse me, adopts a budget, that budget is then uh, sent back to the Board of Finance, where the Board of Finance will set the mill rate uh, based on uh, the budget that was adopted by the RTM. In, in doing, so you know, at that time, uh, again, the R, Board of Finance cannot uh, adjust any of the appropriations, the expenditures that were approved. However, uh, they may consider making some revenue adjustments, because that falls under the, revenue falls under the purview of the Board of Finance. Uh, so that's why the final mill rate isn't set until the Board of Finance acts on it, uh, typically at the last week of May. I don't know if you want me to continue to go on, or if there's, Steve, and yeah, explain a little bit more, uh?
The only question I have, do you have a referendum?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, so it, for, we do not have a referendum. So uh, there, it's the, the thirty-member body acts as the town meeting. There is a provision with any appropriation that exceeds fifty thousand dollars, um, the, there, there's a fifteen-day period that you have to wait before those uh, funds could be expended uh, to give time for a petition for a referendum on that particular appropriation.
So you have a petition for override, is what it's known as?
For, for any items fifty thousand or over. There had that, like I said, there's a fifteen-day waiting period.
Right. I think that's great, thank you, thank you, Jamie. Um, we'll hold any questions after we go through everybody, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, uh, thank you very, very much. Um, really is, Stony Creek's one of the prettiest places in the world, which is part of Branford, so, uh, and Pine Orchard. It's a great, great, great town. Um, my next, um, um, the next member of the panel for this evening, um, is um, I, I think one of the more outstanding public officials in the state of Connecticut. Um, she served as Mayor of Bristol for a number of years. Um, Bristol's a size of, of roughly the size of um, of um, of uh, Fairfield. Uh, it's um, it's um, of sixty thousand, so it's just under sixty-one thousand. And she is now the Town Manager of Enfield. So we have somebody who served as Mayor of a, a good-sized municipality in the state, and somebody who is serving as a Town Manager in Enfield, Connecticut, Council Manager, former government. Uh, Mayor Zappo Sassu uh, went to Providence College, received a master's of public administration from the University of Connecticut, one of the, one of the great programs. And served four terms on the uh, um, City Council, four years as mayor, uh, in the strong mayor form of government they have in Bristol. So it's my pleasure uh, to introduce Ellen Zappo Sassu.
Hi, everyone. So I'm here tonight, sitting in my office, and I've often been asked in the last month or so since I've been here, what is the difference? And how is it going from being mayor to being the Town Manager? And it's really a very interesting definition. Uh, the strong mayor form of government in Bristol, where uh, I had control of twenty-five department heads, a two-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar budget, and all of the services, everything that flowed from that strong mayor form. Um, also, as you're doing all of that forty-hour, minimum-a-week work in the office as the full-time municipal CEO, you're also running out to do the ribbon-cuttings and kiss the babies and do the chicken dinner circuits and all of that. And I'm sure that many of my colleagues um, will say that the very small silver lining to managing a pandemic was that a lot of that fell away. Here in Enfield, I'm doing the municipal policies, creating a budget, and I don't have to do any of the political pieces. There is a ceremonial mayor who presides over an eleven-member Town Council. Uh, there is minority representation, and there is also districts and at-large representatives. So they direct policy, they are uncompensated, they do not have an office at Town Hall, and they kind of come and go. Um, in Bristol, we had a six-member, by-district council. They received ten thousand dollars each for the work that they did, because they were very much a working council. They were liaisons to all the major departments, some of them had voting roles on those policy boards. There was a policy board for just about every major department. And they also served as liaisons to various other smaller groups and organizations, and smaller committees and task forces. Um, in terms of the Board of Finance, I, and uh, Trinie Mendick has heard the story before. The Board of Finance in Bristol actually outranks the City Council and Mayor. They have nine members, two are seven. And it, it was born out of the Great Depression, where the elected officials at that point had really um, not done so well with the finances of, of the town. And the Board of Finance uh, was born out of those industrialists at, at the Great Depression, getting on a train and traveling to New York City and pledging their own credit in order to keep Bristol solvent. In exchange for that, it went into the charter that the Board of Finance will always be larger than the City Council. It has worked well, we've been able to attract a large number of financial professionals and investment professionals. And so over the course of the eight years since then, Bristol has been in a very, very good financial position. Um, here in Enfield, there is no Board of Finance, there is no one overseeing any type of financial policy. It is emanating directly from the Town Manager's Office with input from the council. They also have referendum government, which Bristol does not. And here, it can't be more than two-hundredths of the last brand list type. Uh, it turns out it's about six-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars that you cannot exceed. Otherwise, all of those projects must go to referendum. Uh, that is also true for bonding, which is incredible to me. I've never worked in referendum government before, so it's gonna be an interesting spring. Um, they meet twice a month, and they do everything by government by resolution. Whereas in Bristol, with the strong mayor form of government and the charter, there is a lot more flexibility with how you could set up government. You could have a variety of different task forces, councils, working on specific issues. And then you had your set council uh, commissions and boards that were set up through charter. Uh, both charters uh, actually emanated around the same time. Bristol did a major revision in nineteen eleven, when it went from uh, Selectmen to Mayor Council. But then the major charter revision happened in nineteen sixty-nine. Same thing here in Enfield, nineteen sixty-nine seemed to be the time where they really went through and streamlined a lot of um, lot of these pieces, and came up with a lot of the, the measurements and referendum and how to manage money. Still learning a lot about this charter, but uh, I definitely think if, if someone was to ask my opinion, that this is a much more stable form of government. Uh, I think that there's a lot of opportunities to do more with the policy piece when you're not worrying about some of the other pieces. Although I am a little concerned about the lack of a Board of Finance. And I, I think that that is a critical piece, where you just have another level where people can weigh in on the direction of a town and how you're going to invest those dollars. So I'm looking forward to my first budget season here and seeing how that plays out, and leaving some additional information about how this town manages to do that with their projects.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, uh, it's nice to see you. Our next speaker um, is again from uh, my area, from Hamden. Jim Pascarella um, was the mayor for two months, uh, acting mayor of, of Hamden, when uh, Mayor Jackson went um, to Hartford, serving the administration. So he served as a mayor, but he was a, uh, for many, many years, in two different stints, on the Hamden Legislative Council, the legislative body, and he served as president um, for most of the time that he served on the Legislative Council. Uh, so he'd been for well over a decade, uh, very deeply involved in the um, the day-to-day government of, much more than he probably, uh, than, than he probably wanted to be, uh, in the day-to-day operations of the Hamden government. Uh, he also, between his terms on the Legislative Council, also served uh, for two years on the Board of Education. Um, Jim is, has been very involved in his community for uh, his entire life. Um, he was, for years, a volunteer assistant football coach. Uh, we had the lacrosse, lacrosse coach a little earlier uh, here today from Newtown. Um, and has been uh, also a former president of the Rotary Club in Orange, Connecticut, where he has his business. He's in the insurance business, um, uh, which gives him the ability to spend time in politics. Um, and has been active in the insurance uh, industry trade associations in the state of Connecticut. And like um, First Selectman Rosenthal, uh, Jim spent four years of his life um, in Fairfield University. This was coincidental, by the way, I did not do this intentionally, um, have all these FU guys uh, here. Uh, but he graduated, I think, class of uh, eighty-two or eighty-three, somewhere in that period of time. So uh, he's a little older than um, than uh, than Dan, a little younger than I, and uh, but spent four years of his life at Fairfield. Uh, it's my pleasure and honor, he's my good friend, uh, Jim Pascarella.
Hi, uh, thanks, Steve. Um, I'm, first of all, let me say I'm really honored to be part of this panel. And uh, I've been listening to some of the presentations, and I'm learning a little as uh, you know, as we go. And I think what happens sometimes is you're so accustomed to the town that you're in, that you, you know, hearing what works for others is, is fairly interesting. Uh, in Hamden, we, we are a mayor and council, former government. We call ourselves a town, but we are a city. Uh, everyone likes to refer to us as the town of Hamden, and those of us who live in Hamden like the idea of being referred to as a town, because it just sounds quaint. But the fact of the matter is, is, you know, we are a city. Um, we're extraordinarily diverse in ways folks probably wouldn't even consider to be diverse. But you name it, we, we had it. Um, we recently went through, uh, or I would, just for the sake of simplicity, I'm just going to say we're in the midst of a charter revision at this point. And although we've had significant financial challenges, and uh, for the last, really, since the two thousand and eight crash, we've, do not, or have not had any finance board to speak of. The Town Council operates as the fiscal authority. And the ma, and, and essentially, you know, they rely upon the staff of the executive branch for information on how to proceed forward. We have one, uh, now we have two paid staff. For a number of years, we had one paid staff, a council administrator clerk, who would serve at the pleasure of the president, but also would, you know, gather information on behalf of other members of the body. It was a position that had was becoming rapidly overwhelmed. Part of, in this current charter revision that we're in the midst, uh, midst of, uh, I advocated, along with a few others, that we form a finance committee. And that we form it in a manner where both the executive branch, the mayor, as well as the council president would choose who would sit on the body. And the, and the body would be required to have some background in finance or municipal finances, so to, in order to try to remove the politics um, from the finance. I think what has badly hurt the town ultimately is the lack of having that kind of a stable body available to it. Um, what I found to incredible frustration was how the politics of the day would just dominate nearly everything. And everybody would be running around putting out "today's fire," as the expression would go. But there was n- no one really available or had the time to get into mid- or long-term planning in terms of the town's finances and where we would, one would expect us to be five to ten years out from now. Um, in theory, that would fall, that still falls to the council, obviously, with the, with the input of the executive branch or the mayor's office. But it, it just doesn't, hasn't, on a practical level, been available from a time standpoint. It, the charter does provide the, the executive branch some leeway in terms of- It, the charter does provide the the executive branch some leeway in terms of moving money uh from an uh an intra-department standpoint, but interdepartment. Um, unless the charter, unless the uh council at the time of passing the budget puts through an authorization granting the mayor any authority, as was described, I think, in um in Newtown, if you wanted to move one dollar from the fire department to the police department, you would have to go through the council to uh get approval. And uh when you start to get into uh the complicated nature of running cities uh such as this, uh it's completely impractical. And uh, I mean, I I can remember one time where we went through round and about where we needed to move some money, um uh interdepartment transfers uh from the pension line to a variety of other things to the point where the council just simply couldn't agree on it. And the mayor had to declare a a state of emergency to pay the water bill. And it was basically at that point that I realized that, you know, this isn't a functional situation any longer. So I've advocated the idea of a finance committee. Now, there's one thing that I have as a unique experience, and Steve is well aware of this, that I would caution anybody writing up a charter. And and folks don't necessarily pay attention to it, the succession of the chief executive. I'm the only one in town history who went from president of the council to the mayor's office. We had a uh uh by charter, it indicated uh a scenario where if the timeframe was over six months to the next election, there would be a special election. We ended up having to have this Connecticut State Legislature pass something in order for us to be able to have the election in a timely manner based upon what the charter was to say. If not, we would have been doubling up elections that were already scheduled, such as the primary day, then we'd have a general election for whom would serve out the mayor's term. I would caution everyone, especially uh that that going to an election to replace the chief executive sounds like the great plan in democracy, but in in terms of practicality, at times it could be uh an utter fail. And in our case, thankfully, at the time, the Speaker of the House happened to be from Hamden. And we were in limbo. So I would focus on that very carefully, would be my advice. And I'm gonna repeat this when uh when I get an opportunity to speak to the current Charter Revision Commission up in Hamden, that uh that I would, I would suggest that there be a bit of a sequence and and it it follows whomever it is that's uh sort of in line. If you have a four-year term of mayor, then maybe a special election, that makes more sense. But if you're dealing with a two-year term, I think it best that whomever the uh, whether it be whomever it is that is number two, that there's some sort of a sequential follow-through to serve out that term. Um, you don't want to find yourself in our situation where you need a state legislature to act in order to allow you to finish that up. So that'll be it for now, and I'll wait to for the question period, and thank you for having me.
Thank you, Jim. Let me just point out, um, Hamden has a fifteen-member Legislative Council, nine members by district, and the remainder uh subject to minority party representation at large. Um, so I just wanted to point that they have a hybrid model. Uh, we'll, we'll be talking uh to to Dan Salerno in a little bit about um uh the New Britain model. And I think we just heard from Ellen that Bristol had a um a district model as well. Um, the next speaker um is again one of the most, I think, most outstanding uh city managers, town managers, general manager, I think he was called, in Manchester, Connecticut uh that we've had, that I've had the uh pleasure of working with and 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 being around. Um, I wish I had a chance to work with him more, uh Scott Shanley. Uh, Scott retired last year. Um, and I'm happy for him, but not happy for his town, although I'm sure he has a great uh successor uh in Manchester. Uh, he served for many decades as a municipal CEO. Um, he graduated from Indiana University, University with a BA. And as he said it, um, a hundred years ago, he relocated to uh Portland, Maine, uh which was going through a reawakening. And if anyone's been to Portland, Maine, it really is one of the great um re- revitalized communities in the state of Maine and and probably in all of New England. It's really an amazing place with what they did, uh remodeling their historic buildings. Um, he had an interest in city management during that period of time and uh went to graduate school at the University of Maine. He interned uh and then became a a county administrator out west in Oregon. Um, he returned to Connecticut. I think he grew up in Glass, as I said, I think he grew up in Glastonbury and worked as the assistant and acting manager in the town of Groton until he uh then went back north to Maine for five years to be the uh city administrator in uh Waterville, Maine. Uh, he came back to Connecticut and he held the job that Ellen currently has. Um, he was the town manager in um Enfield for ten years, which is still a record. Ellen, that's something for you to look at, and we'll see whether uh she can beat that record over the course of time. And he finally served as general manager of Manchester in his uh final fifteen years uh of service. He has been involved in numerous boards and commissions. He was on the Executive Committee for CCM. I think that's the way I got to meet Scott, uh Kirma, um and then the Capital Region Council of Governments. Um, he, uh, again, I can't say enough about him, one of the best administrators around. It's my pleasure and honor, and I'm so happy that uh he was not traveling due to the pandemic. Now that he's in retirement, that we have Scott Shanley with us tonight. Scott?
Hi, uh, thank you, thank you, Steve. Um, yes, we're not traveling. Uh, it's something of a disappointment, but that's the way it goes. Um, a couple of things, um, just in listening to the conversation, um you might want to take a look at Groton's form of government. Uh, Groton has a council manager form of government and a forty-two-member uh representative town meeting whose role is to pretty much watch the council. Um, and if the representative town meeting is of interest, it it's, it's, it's just an interesting dynamic, um, very difficult uh for staff sometimes, but but it's a, it's an interesting dynamic to engage forty-two people who are elected in a way that that really does have impact. It's, it's, it's not for nothing. I just guess I wanted to address a couple of things, um. And I could talk about Manchester if that's at some point what you guys would like to do. I I obviously am an advocate for a general manager, council manager, form of government. And the reasons really have been articulated by previous speakers, uh, there is a, there is a uh if done properly, I mean, you, you know, you can, you could hire a bonehead uh manager, it it would go poorly. Uh, but if done properly, it does, it does uh provide a level of stability. And as a practical matter, um, things like personnel work, uh very fraught legally, uh very uh prone to problems, uh very helpful to have in my view, uh somebody who really uh is well-schooled and understands how to, how to do it. Uh, as a practical matter, when I worked in Waterville, uh, that was a city administrator form of government, and the the appointments were the responsibility of the city administrator with the approval of the mayor. It it, it was, it was not a smooth process, and it also got into legal problems. My suggestion would be whatever form of government you choose, uh vest the hiring authority in a, in a single person or a single body uh so that uh there's clarity, uh especially in court. There's, there's clarity over who is responsible. And in the, in the event of a nineteen eighty-three action or something like that, there really needs to be clarity about uh who's making the decisions or who who made the decision and who's responsible for it. So that's just generally speaking. There are some misconceptions, I think, about the manager form of government. Uh, I've heard it over thirty years. Um, you know, there's no accountability. Hear that. I've heard that before. Um, that, that's really uh not correct. I can speak from my own personal experience, uh, that uh when uh governing bodies have enough of you, uh, it's really quite possible to move you along. Uh, I went to Enfield fired with enthusiasm, uh and I left Enfield fired with enthusiasm. It was a, 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 a good, a good time there and and ten good years, but uh, you know, things have their uh, everything has their time. And and uh, so I think that there is accountability in the process. The elected body makes most all of the policy decisions. The elected body makes all of the budgetary decisions. And my experience in Enfield and Manchester uh is that there has been robust political activity. Uh, it, it, it doesn't become apolitical. The things that become apolitical are really the running of the operation. Uh, the policy decision-making, the capital project decision-making, the mill rate setting, all of that maintains itself as it should be, uh as a democratic process. I think that um well, as I said, the, the, the primary benefit, I think, of of a manager form of government is the ability to uh maintain the policy-level arguments, discussions, consensus building that needs to take place in a democracy, a healthy democracy that really drives the community. Uh, but uh relieves the mayor or whomever is the chief elected official from the day-to-day responsibilities. Uh, I've always, you know, uh Ellen can speak to it better because she's been both a manager and a mayor. Uh, I always kind of recoil at the, at the term strong mayor, weak mayor. Uh, because I've worked with a lot of mayors over thirty years. And there are, I've worked with some very strong mayors in a manager form of government. Um, and I've worked with what I would consider to be weak mayors in positions that that um have strong mayor forms. Um, you really, uh, it, it, in a mayor form of government, it's uh, uh everybody knows, they believe they know how it works. In a manager form of government, it's really important that the elected body understand the form of government, that the, that the, the city manager doesn't take direction from the mayor. The city manager takes direction from the body as a whole. So you, you have to have a, a majority uh on your team. Uh, you have to be able to get votes and and count them. Um, and if that's, if the mayor is able to do that, then you, of course, take the direction because that's the job of the managers. What does the majority want to do? So sometimes there are conflicts there uh of of a misunderstanding over what the, what the role is. But that's part of the job of the city managers, to help educate. Um, I don't disagree about the, the, the finance body. It, you're, one is fortunate when one has one or two members of a board who really like budgets and they really pay attention. And that's really helpful because they're the ones that are gonna ask really tough questions. Uh, they're the ones that are going to kind of get underneath um and shake things up. Um, and one hopes that one has that on the board, but uh that doesn't always happen on a council. Um, so I think there is accountability. I think there's continuity, and I think there's stability. And I think there's a lot of value in today's world. Uh, Manchester has you know, the budget's two hundred plus million. Uh, it has a water utility, it has a sewer utility, it has a landfill, uh, downtown workspace, uh which is an enterprise. Uh, you know, a hundred, uh, running a police department uh is um not as simple as hiring a police chief and saying, okay, do it. So I think it's really important to have that kind of expertise available to assist the governing body in implementing what it is that they really want to accomplish. So, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as we go forward.
Thank you, Scott. And and uh Manchester has a Board of Directors, nine members at large, um, and uh
That's, that's correct, which is basically it's a town council. As a matter of fact, they have a Charter Revision Commission going now, and they're talking about changing the name to Town Council, so people, but similar, uh similar to uh uh Hamden, Manchester is a town by name and by state statute. Uh, it is a, it is a, it is a small city, and it has um the challenges of a city. Uh, and uh, I think that uh it, it has worked very well. It's a, it's a triple-A rated community. It's a, a uh dynamic and and economically healthy. So I, I, I think the form works very well here.
Thank you, Scott. Um, for the final speaker tonight, uh is probably the fellow I've known the longest in this, in this panel. I think I've known Danny Salerno since the late nineteen seventies. Uh, we shared um um a, a passion for a good friend of ours who was in Congress uh during that period of time. Uh, Danny uh had not run for office until later, uh later in life. He uh um became a uh member of the council in, in two thousand and fifteen. Um, I'm sorry, two thousand and thirteen, served for eight years, uh was the majority leader for uh four years, four of those years, uh in a split term. Uh, he is now the treasurer, part-time treasurer of the City of New Britain. Um, he was the council liaison to the Water Board, Parks and Recreation, uh city planning, uh Board of Finance and Taxation, and the Housing Authority. I don't know how he had any time to do anything else. And and on top of that, uh, he um has served as an adjunct faculty member at several different colleges in the Hartford area, University of Hartford, uh Central Connecticut, and Manchester Community College in post, and UConn, uh at various branches of UConn, uh teaching, um, I think sociology and political science for the last thirty-five years. Um, and uh, again, I've known him since the nineteen seventies. He's a uh one of the, one of the great guys I know, and I'm um, um privileged to know him and have as a friend for all those years. And so my pleasure is to introduce to you, uh, Dan Salerno. Is Dan here? There's Dan.
Steve, tha- thanks for that introduction. Everyone can hear me, okay? Good, good. Um, of course, uh, in normal circumstances, you usually have the best for last, and this was not gonna be the case. After listening to uh the, the illustrious group that's here, I, I, again, I'm humbled to be here myself. Uh, I, Steve, I appreciate the opportunity. I almost don't know where to start because I come from the larger city of the representation here. The fifth or sixth largest city in the state, depending how, how you add up the population, I suppose, um, in New Britain, Connecticut. Uh, most of you may know of New Britain, of course, through a variety of uh reasons over the years. Um, centrally located in the city, um, a densely populated community that I think is important in terms of some of the conversations we have here, uh seventy-three thousand plus um people in thirteen-point-three square miles. So if you can imagine uh what that means in terms of population and infrastructure and a whole variety of things, that has an impact on how government operates, certainly. Um, and funding, of course, is a whole nother issue. I'm gonna try to approach this and and uh, Steve, if I go too long, just stop me. But I'm gonna do it from two or, two or three different approaches. One is obviously the political realities, which lead us to what ultimately takes place in any form of charter revision. Um, and as well as just the overall complexity of government of why we're going through so many changes. We're going through a, what I would like to consider a, a minor um, a renaissance in the city. Uh, we've come from a very long way with a variety of problems and issues within the community from a financial perspective, uh a high mill rate and so on, to trying to level off those things. Uh, but we entered office eight years ago. We had a deficit, uh, depending who you spoke with, uh, uh, was somewhere in the vicinity of thirty million dollars. Um, and in the last eight years, we now have a, uh, turn that around to uh having somewhere in the vicinity of twenty or twenty-four thousand, twenty-four million dollars in actually a surplus budget. Um, and we've done some really good things in the city, and there's a, a variety of reasons why I believe that happened. And in twenty thirteen, and I think I'll take the political in first. You probably all know the city of New Britain's politics over the course of time and headlines from one time or another in the last thirty years. Um, it was known as the Beirut of politics. It was known as the Beirut of politics in the state of Connecticut. And certainly had to live up to that questionable reputation over the course of years. But a lot of things have turned around in, in the last several decades. And in the last eight years, we of course had a mayor who at a very young age, at twenty-six, Mayor Aaron Stewart, a Republican, came into play and, and ran for political office to be the mayor. Her father had been a previous mayor for several terms. And intermittently, another Democrat was elected. And I, I share this because the politics in the city are very interesting in terms of how this administration has fared and where it is over the last eight years. Mayor Stewart, at the age of twenty-six, ran as a Republican in a predominantly Democratic community. Fourteen thousand Democrats, thirteen thousand Republicans, thirteen thousand unaffiliated voters, and about forty-five hundred Republicans. Historically, there was just no way that we would have possibly a, a Republican mayor. We've had several of them, including her father, during that period of time, ten years prior. Now, why that's important is that the mayor did not run with a full Republican slate. We created in two thousand thirteen what we call the RUD Caucus. It stands for Republican Unaffiliated and Democratic Caucus. We have fifteen members in our council. I was majority leader for two different terms, split terms, if you will. Majority leader in two thousand fifteen, seventeen, and then again in two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one. Never had a majority in the council. There was no party majority. Out of fifteen, today, right now, it's seven Republicans, four, five Democrats, four Democrats and, or three Democrats and three in our, on our RUD Caucus slate, and then two unaffiliateds, and then three Democrats who ran on the Democratic Party. That I confuse you and not for ready. But we did that as a coalition because we believed in bipartisanship. And that's pretty much how the, the, the city has been operating now for the last eight years. It, it's interesting because the criticism that goes with being Democrat versus Republican in, in the city, of course, is, is ongoing. And yet we've been incredibly successful administratively and socially and developmentally over these last eight years. It was an opportunity now with basically what would be considered the RUD Caucus as a twelve-three vote on a fifteen-member council. Take the opportunity to be able to move to do some things that communities, that this community heretofore had not done. You know, one of it was, one, one area that we've done several times is taking what I believe sound management, and I would love to hear Mr. Shanley's comments on that as a town manager, of the need to do some restructuring in terms of our bonding issues. Taking, if you will, an opportunity, the opportunity to, to look at existing market circumstances. Having a very heavy load of bonding projects simply because over the course of, of years, the city has addressed its, its education programs, a two thousand twenty plan that existed, and highly level of bonding area, a bonding situations within school, the school district. So most of our schools are in pretty tip-top shape, trying to stay with, you know, the changes over ten, fifteen, twenty, and thirty years. And to restructure was something that heretofore was not really accomplished in administrations prior to these last eight years. So I, I think that that's indicative of, of, you know, where, where this administration went and where this coalition of government went. That was a big apple, a, a, a piece of the pie, I should say, to, to take out of a government. Addressing some issues that historically maybe not had been considered sufficiently, at least certainly in my estimation, of being on the council. That RUD Caucus and that approach also transferred how the budgetary process works from the standpoint that it's fairly clear in our constitution slash charter. That there is a very long-term, a, a, a long extending process of how our budget works. It's interesting to have heard from some of your smaller communities. I actually had a very small stint in Rhode Island in a town manager position, of, of, similar to your RTM approach. You know, they had the town meetings. And I, I still can't figure out how any town at a certain level is able to go through that. Certainly, it's wonderful from a democratic point of view, but it's something you really can't quite do in a community of seventy-three thousand. You would probably be there for several days doing a line item vote, which is what this one Rhode Island town actually did. So you can imagine. But our process basically through the charter says that we have a, a, a Board of Finance and Taxation that is appointed by the mayor. We obviously are a very, a strong mayor council form of government. The council has a lot of authority and a lot of clout within the process of pretty much everything, including identifying, you know, when money is spent and how is it spent. We do things by resolution. So our meetings can be extensively long at certain times of the year. It's not unusual to run into nine, ten, ten, eleven, sometimes midnight during a budgetary process to really go over the budgetary results that, that basically come from a Board of Finance and Taxation appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. That Board of Finance and Taxation then forwards its budgetary proposal to the mayor, who in turn takes his or her position on the budget of where cuts will be made or increases will, will be made, department by department. And then refers it to the council for either approval or rejection. That's, that's the process. Public hearings are obviously required and should be. And it's interesting that I note that we don't really have tremendous participation in those public hearings in the community. So, you know, it's very often that we, once the budget comes down through the mayor's office, it really is up to the, it's a determination of the council to be able to, again, approve or reject. And depending on the makeup within that council can determine how not only departments can be affected, but also it's important, you know, to, as I'm sure other cities understand this, that, you know, when you have a budget of a quarter of a billion dollars and fifty-one percent of that budget is education and the city has no control over any form of educational expenditures other than allocation, it creates, you know, quite a different kind of atmosphere about how priorities are done in the community. So I kind of share that background as, again, it's a, it, there's never a, there's never a time in our community that there isn't something interesting and exciting going on with the various levels of interest groups that take place. And it affects how that budget process works. Other than not having enough, I feel people participating in the public hearing process. Ultimately, it still goes to the council and the council either, again, accepts and rejects. On the charter revision piece, and I just scratched the surface, by the way, on the, on the complexities of, of, of the governmental political process there. But on, on, we've looked at the charter issue one other time in the last eight years, which was really sort of a housekeeping. Our charter is, is voluminous. I was just going through that and I was identifying some of the dates and obviously, like any older community, dating back to, you know, eighteen hundreds here in, in New Britain, from a town to, from a town to a city. You know, we have reservations that those charters are, you know, nineteen oh five and nineteen thirty-nine and nineteen sixty-one. And, you know, some of these things in the charter are incredibly archaic. But it's difficult in any charter revision process that we have found, and I've been involved in it over the years, when you're doing one, you, you can't really confuse the general public too much. And, and I say that with all candor. The, there's no way that you can possibly slap seven or eight or ten charter revision recommendations to present it to a general population for a vote. First about that would be unfair. It gets complicated. The percentage of individuals who participate in the voting of a charter revision is minuscule by comparison to the overall turnout in almost any election. You know, historically, that would almost be half of what the turnout might be in that election. So in all fairness, and I think to be politically fair to the community, you need to pick and choose what charter revisions you're going to make in a voluminous document. And so we went after some things in the first effort, in the first two terms of the RUD Caucus and got some home, housekeeping pieces cleaned out. But the major ones, which were basically to try to move the mayor's position to a four-year electoral process, was defeated by the people. It was for a variety of other local political reasons that we felt there was, that occurred and why that defeated. Yet the housekeeping, which was much more complicated in many ways, had a variety of subdiv, subpieces to it, was actually passed. This time around, we're looking at another charter revision. And, and, and it's really taking a look to eliminate several positions that have been historically elected. These are, again, these are recommendations on the council. I, by the way, will be serving on the Charter Revision Committee as well as a, a seven-member commission with Republicans and Democrats. And I, as a Democrat, will be serving, obviously, with two other Democrats. The Republicans have a majority on the charter revision from that standpoint. And previously, I ran in the RUD Caucus. So that creates interesting friction, you know, within the community that you're really not a Democrat. Again, remember, New Britain is the Beirut of politics historically, and I'm not sure any of that has often changed over the course of, of years. Now, the, there are only three or four recommendations at this point because we have recognized that it's those in leadership over the years that you can't bite too much off in a charter change for the reasons that I mentioned earlier. But two of the matters that we're looking seriously on, and I'm going to just give you some overview of it, is that we really want to be able to change the election, the election provisions to a ward system with a minority party representation requirement in each ward, as provided in the Connecticut general statutes. Presently, we are a hybrid. We are five wards, districts, representation, two members from each, and then five aldermen at large who must run citywide. Several decades ago, it was the complete opposite where it was all at large. So we've had a hybrid and we've kind of toyed with different ways of how it ought to be done. And a lot of it had to do with whatever the political temperament might be in the community during those periods of time. So that's one area that we certainly want to look because we want to have the minority representation. Well, there are those who want to have the minority representation. By the way, it's going to be a, a very interesting charter revision process. There's nothing set in stone. I want to make that perfectly clear. These are just some of the recommendations that are looking forward. And the other is that we are looking to begin softly, and I use my term softly, these are my perspective, do, start provisions that are outlining a position of what right now has been recommended as a chief administrative officer. There are several camps in the community of those who believe in some form of city manager form of government. And there are those who are opposed to it. For all the historical reasons of how most democratically controlled municipalities were in the heyday of, in the city of New Britain, strong union representation, strong democratic, the Democratic Party controlled probably the council for anywhere from thirty-five to forty years as, again, a strong mayor council form of government. And usually held the seat of the Democratic mayor as well. So these things really play into it. So why would people not want a town or city manager? Mr. Shanley might be able to point this out as someone who is, but, you know, the debate always goes on. What's the cusp of when city-town managership works? And, you know, the, the debate goes on. There are those who'll say it's at fifty thousand. There are those who will say it's a hundred thousand. I would like to think as long as it's not a bonehead who's being identified as the town or city manager as represented. A good town or city manager can manage a town of a hundred thousand or in our case, seventy-three thousand. But we're not going there immediately in the sense that we're looking basically to do some form of chief administrative officer who may be able to work in conjunction with a strong mayor at this stage for the daily management of the city. Probably one of the questions will be, why would you start to do that? I basically told you the complexities of, of the city of New Britain from a political standpoint. But if anyone knows what it's like to work in government today, it's, it's complex. There are so many pieces and so many sections of how the federal or the state subsidies work, where funding comes down. And to be honest, if someone's been involved in politics for, for decades, not everyone is necessarily walks in from a political perspective, always equipped with some of the tools to be able to address these complicated, modern-day problems. I mean, we are now looking, and we know with the vision, that down the road, the city is going to have to look at massive infrastructure issues, as many cities, cities have in, in, in this part of the country. We're going to have water and sewer infrastructure problems that are going to cost lots of dollars. Where are we going to get the revenue for that? How do we play that out? We're looking at constantly the, the restructuring bonding of issue, restructuring issue about bonding because we want to be, stay on top of, of how we can best serve the city through what we know we have to do. Cities like New Britain can't afford to continue to raise taxes in order to meet those restructuring or infrastructure needs. So, 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 so those are, we, I believe, and I think there are many people who do, because it will go, you know, through a very lengthy process, that, that a town manager, city manager form of professionalism is essential in the modern twenty-first century. Now, that's not, and it should not be, you know, people will say, well, you know, we, it's a Republican perspective or a Democratic perspective. And as someone who's a Democrat with a public administration background, I firmly do believe that the complexities of government require more than just citizen participation. We don't want to ever discount citizen participation, but we want to be able to, to afford that so that the citizens know that these choices are made for the betterment of their community. I could go on. I won't. That'd take you more time than everyone else. But, you know, when you put me up at the, as being the, the four slot, you know, I get to drive everybody else home. So thank you, Steve, for having me. And any questions that I can provide, any answers to your questions, I'm, I'm available.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. I, I, I'm trying to remember whether New Britain still has the border militia provision in their charter. Their, their, when I did charter revision in the late twentieth century, there was a provision where you had a border enforcement unit within the, within the charter that, that was dealt with boundary lines between Newington and, and New Britain. I don't know if that still exists and you still have a.
It probably does because you can imagine.
I think it's still in your charter. Thank you very, very much.
Exactly. Where do you find the time and what do you do to deal with a hundred-plus-year-old charter, a hundred-and-fifty-year-old charter with so many elements in it that were done for the, for the good of the community at the time?
Well, unfortunately Fairfield doesn't have that issue. There are.
I don't think so. We gave you another perspective, I'm sure, Fairfield.
Yep. Nope, but I'm doing it in Hartford right now. Mr. Chairman, I think that's it for the speakers and we can open the Q and A.
Yeah, that was great. And thank you all very much. It was very insightful from a lot of different perspectives. And I'm sure the commission members have some questions and I'm just looking around to see. John Matola has his hand up. So, and then John Wen. Down you're muted. There you go.
Can you hear me now, everyone?
Yes, sir.
And thank you all for those presentations. Not sure how to go about doing this, so just let me dive into it. Mr. Cosgrove, you, you're former government in Branford, very similar to Fairfield's. And the thing I found interesting in your presentation was you have a thirty-member RTM, but you spoke about your RTM really functions in subcommittees. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. You know, we always say the, the work of the RTM is done in the subcommittee. So, you know, as I said, it's, the majority of the committees have seven members. Ways and Means has, is only one, has five members. That's where the work is done, discussion, smaller group. At the full RTM meeting, which typically we meet regularly once a month, the, each committee, the, the chair of the committee provides the report of the action, the recommendation coming out of committee. There may be further discussion, debate on the floor. But like I said, the work is done in, at the subcommittee level.
All right. And, and the subcommittee process is. All right. And, and the subcommittee process, is that dictated by the charter language? Or is it just how the RTM works in, in, uh, Branford?
No, it's not in the, uh, the charter. It's in, in ordinance that, uh, has the RTM, um, rules of the RTM. So, uh, in nineteen fifty-eight, as I said, we went to, from a town meeting form of government to the, uh, uh, RTM form of government. The only thing that was really specified in the charter, uh, was the need for the annual budget meeting. That's laid out that process. And it said, you know, may, uh, call and convene meetings from time to time, uh, you know, to, you know, do work of the RTM. In our town code, an ordinance was passed that lays out the, uh, the rules for the RTM.
Okay.
So any adjustments to the rules is just a simple code change.
All right. So it's, I appreciate that too. So, um, I guess this is a general question for all of you and, and maybe more directed to the, to the bodies, the municipalities that have larger, um, legislative bodies. Can you just briefly, each of you, tell me what, if any, um, support that your legislative bodies have from like, do they have any staff? Is, is there any type of budget that they each have? Do they have any space where they can meet? Things like that. I, and, and I'd like to hear from all of you with respect to that.
I'm, I'm glad to pipe in quickly. Mr. Pescarella, go right ahead.
Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, and Hamden, the legislative body, uh, I mean, we have a budget, but in terms of expenditures for the council itself, we don't receive, or I should say, they don't receive salaries or, or, or compensation per se. Uh, however, uh, in, uh, they did put together a, um, what they call a stipend in order to cover expenses, which is, which is fairly small. It's, it's roughly two thousand dollars per council member. And the president gets a whopping additional four hundred dollars on top of that. In terms of staff, uh, there are two full-time, um, staffers. You know, a council administrator and a deputy council administrator. And then one of the council administrators receives, or the, you know, the lead council mission receives a stipend of roughly six thousand dollars to be the clerk of the council. The other expense, in terms of a room, uh, in our town hall, there's been a council chambers dedicated for the council. It's under the control of the council. So, you know, that's their room. Of course, I don't think they've met there in quite a while, but it's mostly Zoom. The other expenses are, are, are really, that we, there's a, a stenographer for the council meetings. And then, um, and then, uh, the council meetings are videoed. I don't think we're paying for the video because I think that's coming from, uh, uh, public television. But we certainly pay the stenographer for the official records. In Hamden, the, the, you have to remember in Hamden, the council is independent completely of the administration. The mayor doesn't serve in any capacity on the, on the council. I was reading the backup and I noticed that in, in some instances, the mayor chairs the council or is ex officio of the council. It is a separate government body, um, totally. So that's just the way we are anyhow.
I can, I can speak, uh, generally speaking, the, the manager's office, uh, and the entire staff of the town government in the manager form serves each board member, um, equally. So in terms of the board, when I worked in Groton, uh, the representative town meeting, need for information and need for staff work and need for, uh, research and things like that, was also done, uh, by town staff through the manager's office, but oftentimes, uh, coordinated through the moderator of the RTM. Uh, so you weren't working with forty-two different people. The moderator would work, uh, with the manager or with, with, uh, uh, the mayor and the manager to, to come up with a request. But, but, um, there wasn't a separate, a separate group. Okay. Thank you.
In Bristol, the, the six members of the council will receive a ten-thousand-dollar stipend salary. Uh, there is no dedicated space, but there are opportunities for them to, um, store materials, budget books, and there are meeting rooms that are made available for them if they need to meet with constituents. In Enfield, there is no compensation or stipends per charter. Uh, and there is no office space or, or anything other than the public rooms. And, and that is actually something that, um, has been requested of this new town council, of which out of the eleven, there's five new members, that they would like a little bit of a space where they could print documents and especially in lieu of any type of compensation, use their own office supplies and, and equipment. Uh, they'd like to be able to come here and do that. So we're gonna try to make that happen as part of a little bit of a, a floor plan reorganization that we're contemplating.
Thanks.
Obviously, New Britain is a fifteen-member council. I have my druthers. I like to see it go to nine, but that would require a char- charter change. And that's not gonna happen too soon. And you can imagine the political ramifications of that. I share that because that involves the redistricting and the changing of wards at large, et cetera. Um, I, I think the fifteen-member council, from my experience, is cumbersome. I've always liked to say that it's kind of the, the duty of the majority leader often is like herding cats. And, uh, it's, uh, it, it, it's complicated. But it's just part of the reality. It keeps things interesting. We receive a thirty-five-hundred-dollar, um, a year, um, stipend, as the case would be, uh, as members of the council. The, the mayor pro temporary receives, uh, forty-five-hundred. And we have a town, we have a clerk of the committee. That's an interesting story I won't share with you here. It used to be part-time. It's now full-time and it has quite an exorbitant salary to the point where it actually makes more than the mayor did until recently. Um, it's, yeah, uh, it's, uh, that's a whole interesting dynamic that I won't share at this point. Anybody can ask me another time. That individual in that position does, however, handle the agenda, um, uh, the, the, the development of, not the development of the agenda itself that comes out of the council and the mayor's office, but in actual, the, uh, the production of, 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 uh, materials that are necessary, backup, uh, information, making sure notifications are done in a proper manner, that's done by that one-person office, which is identified as an administrative supervisor, though that individual doesn't supervise anyone. So, um, uh, it, it's a union position, um, and it's, uh, probably gonna be difficult to, to diminish. And the only way you can get rid of it, I don't think that necessarily needs to go away entirely. But it is, uh, it could be a part-time. It was handled as a part-time position before. Uh, that's pretty much the status of, uh, of what we do, of what we do with the city. We've also gone, we also did in twenty-fourteen, uh, went to, uh, full, uh, electronic virtual, uh, effort. So each one of the council members has their own, um, computer system, uh, set up, the, their own desktop, as the case would be. Um, we, uh, can do things virtually even before COVID, uh, which was interesting. It saved us. And we saved lots of money, uh, just from those, we probably paid for the entire system within the first two years just based on paper alone. I can tell you, it was quite a, a savings, uh, for the budget of the council and overall for the city. In, in Manchester, the, the mayor, uh, is the chairman of the, chairman of the, the board, but everybody refers to him as mayor or as mayor depending. Has an office, uh, that's, that's in the general manager's suite. And, um, the, the mayor is paid three thousand dollars a year and the rest of the board is paid a hundred dollars a month.
Thank you. Um, a, a few more just follow-up questions. I don't want to hog, hog this. I, I do appreciate, appreciate most of you seem to be saying that one of your big concerns is a need to have, um, experience, um, running municipal government and, uh, you know, I, I was, I found it interesting that Mrs. Soreno talked about they're looking at charter revision and they're looking at adding a C A O to, uh, New Britain. I, I guess my general question with respect to that, and whoever wants to comment can comment. How are your upper management positions filled in your various municipalities? And what I'm talking about is positions like a finance director, a human resources manager, to the extent that some of you may have C A Os of some type, uh, those types of positions. Are they, are they appointed by the executive chief? Is there, um, uh, i- i- does there have to be ratification of appointments by the legislative bodies? And once appointed to these positions, do they, do they serve at the pleasure of the mayor in the first election? Um, or a town manager? Or once they're filled, do they serve for specific terms? Or are they in office for, for lack of a better term, for, for life? It can only be removed for cause. I mean, can you, can you, probably gave you a lot of scenarios there, but I'm just curious how your municipalities work with respect to those, those upper-level type positions?
I could, in Hamden, mayor appoints, council approves. They work at the pleasure of the mayor and the mayor can, uh, remove them. The mayor has the authority to appoint an acting, uh, department head, for a period of time, and then they can extend it. But at some point or another, the acting or the appointment process has to be brought to the council. There are very few positions in Hamden that the mayor has that control over. We have a lot of unionized, uh, department folks. Uh, there's one thing I think should change, and that's the mayor's staff. The staff of five people or so require approval from the council. And, and, you know, I never understood that, um, you know. The mayor's chief of staff and deputy chief of staff and communications director, I mean, those are people that, you know, I don't think they should be brought to the council. Mayors live and die with their staff and, and you know, they should have the authority to at least name their staff. But like town attorney, finance director, personnel director, public works director, uh, that's the process.
In a, in a manager, manager form of government, the, uh, most manager form of governments, the, uh, uh, chief executive officer is the manager, uh, and is the appointing authority. As I said, I work in an administrator form of government where the administrator was the appointing authority, but the, uh, uh, the mayor, uh, had to approve, uh, and that, that can be very, very fraught. That's why I, I suggest that whatever you decide, that you have a single point of, of, uh, authority with respect to hiring and firing. There are no contracts in Manchester. They're non-union employees, the department heads. There, there's annual performance reviews, uh, they have, uh, and sometimes, um, they need to move along. And that's, uh, that's the job of the managers to, to make that happen. Not for political purposes, not because people don't like them, uh, or don't like what they said, but because they're not doing the job. So that's most, most manager form of governments.
So in the town of Branford, the first election is by charter. It's the chief administrative officer. Does all the hiring for these upper-level positions, the upper management positions. However, uh, a number of them, of the positions, uh, in two thousand thirteen, are, uh, put into, uh, unionized. They're in a supervisor union. So it's, it's kind of, right now, there's probably, uh, uh, a few that fall within that union. I will say there's not, at the town of Branford though, one thing is that there's, there's not, um, turnover in staff in terms of with administrations. So those that are not, uh, you know, do not enjoy, uh, you know, being part of a collective bargaining unit or union protection, um, very rarely is there ever cha- cha- changeover during, uh, with administrations. Two positions, the assess, I'm sorry, town clerk and, uh, tax collector in Branford, uh, are both still elected. However, that is, uh, something we are considering, we are exploring now, uh, in terms of making those, uh, uh, non-elected positions.
Nothing's ever simple in New Britain, as I like to say. But, um, historically, most of the department heads on the city side, uh, remember the, the boards, uh, the board of education handles its own hiring for all intensive purposes. They were mostly union positions and in the last eight years, they have, um, almost every major department head has either left or retired. And they've been replaced with non-union positions. Uh, they are now based on appointment by the mayor and obviously with approval from the common council. That pretty much, uh, it's really been a, a cost savings, um, uh, that's occurred, uh, in the course of about an eight-year period. And I don't, and, and, and all the, all the appointments, um, I should say not the appointments, but the, the provisos for, um, for the positions, uh, through advertising, all go through a civil service commission. That's done, um, uh, properly and professionally. And then, of course, the mayor makes the recommendation to the council and the council determines whether they accept it or not. It's gone through a pretty rigorous process at this point.
Okay. Thank you. I, I'm not gonna ask any more questions right now. I, I appreciate it.
All right. I think John Winn had the next question.
Uh, thank you, uh, and thank you all for the presentations. Very informative. My most consistent note is to go back and re-listen to each one of your presentations because there was so much interesting information. My specific questions are related to, how do we, everyone seems to recognize the importance and benefits of a town manager type of role in the town. How do we, uh, achieve kind of community buy-in and acceptance to that need and that recognition of that, that objective? Second question is, I heard several examples of streamlining the legislative bodies and function. Again, how do we get the community buy-in and acceptance of that? And the third question is for Ellen and, and Scott, since you functioned in a town manager role, is there a residency requirement to be the town manager for the communities that you've served?
So I think you have three questions there, John, that you just asked.
Correct.
Okay, so could we just go one at a time though?
Sure.
Just make it clear. Sorry.
Achieving community buy-in and acceptance of the need for a town manager. That's the first one. How do we go about doing that? What are the challenges? What are any suggestions to achieve that objective?
Uh, I'd love to chime in on that if I could, as, as you would expect, but, um, any charter revision requires a campaign, um, I believe. Otherwise, the complications of why people are doing that, that maybe mistrust or just not understanding the complexities of government, uh, it requires, uh, a, a good selling and marketing of what it is you want to change and why. To the point where, you know, it's, uh, historically, that hasn't always been the case, which is why very well-meaning changes in the charter, uh, get defeated. Because the general public doesn't understand them. The wording process is important. Um, how they're presented on, um, you know, on the, uh, actual ballot, uh, is, is crucial. And that has to be thought out, I believe, more than historically, I know in the city, that had been done. This time, there is that intent to be able to, to market why, you know, what's the reason? Why are we changing these things? And, uh, and it requires almost like running a campaign. And, and I highly recommend that approach because, uh, that's, uh, because the majority of people don't pay attention, as I said earlier, to those changes, um, or, or don't know enough about the charter. A general consensus, not at all meaning to be condescending, just that it's just the reality of the, uh, the political fabric.
Okay.
Yeah, it, and to Dan's point, when doing charter revision, in addition to the structure of the questions, the timing of it, again, can have a, a major impact if there's any type of, um, incendiary issues within town. Uh, also, we've always in Bristol made sure that we ran municipal-focused questions in municipal election years because the worst thing you could ask for is an election even years or presidential, where people are coming out that do not have a record of voting in municipal elections and don't really understand or care about those issues. And then you have that group of people voting on questions of local concern for the charter that they just randomly will vote yes or no without understanding the issue. So the timing of them is important as well. Um, I think that the campaign is important, the grassroots piece is important, but I also think it has to be a coalition. And years and years ago, I actually worked in New Britain at the Chamber of Commerce at one point when they were doing their charter revision over and trying to slim it down into a more manageable document. And I remember that we had been requested, uh, from the business community to raise some funds in order to run that campaign and get buy-in from the business community about efficiency issues and how it would be better for the community. And I think those are critical points. And I, I don't remember the third question, sorry.
Just a, just a quick comment though, on one of the conversations that the charter revision, um, commission is going to look at, um, is to entertain that we establish some timeframe of review of the charter on a regular basis. That doesn't exist in the charter. So as I said, we did it back at, um, not as well as I think it could have been done seven, six or six years ago. The last one prior to that was in the twentieth century, as, uh, Steve Mednick mentioned. Um, this should be reviewed every four years or five years, uh, so that it becomes part of it. And that's how you educate the general public to know, well, this is part of government, this is why we're doing it. So we're going to entertain that this time.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, uh, one to give political advice because I don't know enough about Fairfield to how to, how to sell it. But, uh, what, when, I, I have been asked that question a, a, a thousand times. And what I always say to folks is, um, that people pay a lot of taxes. So if, if, if you are, uh, investing twelve thousand dollars a year, uh, in a retirement fund for yourself, uh, and you can only invest in one company, and that's going to be your retirement, would you be okay with the president of that company, uh, the standard and the, and the requirement be that they be eighteen years old or older? And an elector? And that's it? Would you be okay with putting your retirement fund there? And the answer, of course, for everybody is no. But that's basically what happens, um, you know, in some communities. It's, it's, uh, it's amazing how things can turn around so quickly. So, I mean, that's, but I, I, you know, I don't know Fairfield well enough to know how to, how to sell it, market it.
That's a great example.
Oh, and, and, uh, all the communities I've worked in, uh, did have residency requirements in the charter. And there's also a lot you can do within the contract that you have with the manager. Uh, Enfield used to, I don't know if they still do, but they used to have a, a, a residency requirement after one year.
They actually have a corporation council opinion on file that says that it's not binding, so it is-
Yeah, that was, that was Chris, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's an interesting comment, I would please that because it's so important, I think, is the idea of residency. The city of New Britain, like so many communities, um, I believe, uh, got away from that over the last few decades. Probably because of, for a lot of different reasons, competition of professions and so on. And now the only people that are required to live by, uh, not necessarily by charter, um, is the police chief and the fire chief. At this point, all of the department heads, uh, do not have to live in, in the residency. And of course, in the board of education side, that's a whole nother question since, um, that's not a requirement either. The board of education could stipulate that, um, and usually does it through contract. Now, remember, I say that because the superintendent of schools, uh, you know, represents a pretty hefty salary along with the administration within the board of ed.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, I was addressing the, uh, the manager. Uh, in Manchester, there's only a few department heads that, that have to have residency.
On the topic of, uh, the town manager, uh, getting back to, you know, and where I certainly, uh, appreciate and actually really have some of the same, have considered some of the same concerns that have been expressed, uh, throughout this discussion, in particular by, uh, uh, first selectman from Newtown, um, as well as, uh, Scott. You know, the town of Branford, and I just read the first line of our charter, is, it is the purpose of this charter to provide the town of Branford with a modern, workable form of government. And when I look at Branford's government and where we're, I, I do still that it is, uh, it is workable. Uh, and it has served the town of Branford for, you know, sixty-plus, uh, years, uh, quite well. Uh, you know, when I look back when the town was going through this, you know, the town of Branford was in a far different uh, shape than it is to, it is today. I mean, today we're a triple A rated community, we've very well funded in our pensions, our O P E D liability is essentially knocked that out. We do not have anything. Uh, we, we really, uh, fund our, all of our liabilities, we continue to invest in our community. And, uh, and that is something, you know, if you look back at the time when the town was going through a charter revision, uh, we did not enjoy. Uh, the town of Branford was in, uh, very difficult shape, uh, it's so much, we were at roughly a third of every dollar was being spent towards debt service. We were essentially cut off from going to the market at that, in the early, uh, sixties. So, uh, that was a long time ago, but the point I wanted to bring up is, I think the way our government is structured, as I mentioned, with the three-member elected board of selectmen, with the appointed board of finance, and then the, uh, thirty-member R T M, which, again, not one, uh, a party cannot put up more than two-thirds of any, uh, cannot control more than two-thirds of that board. It does provide, what I heard from a number of, uh, members on this, it does provide stability. And I believe over the time, the town of Branford has established essentially a cultural guardrail rail for being fiscally responsible. Um, and, and, so right now, um, you know, when I, yes, are there painful times, like, at anything? And does it come up every once in a while? Hey, maybe we should take another look at this form of government, maybe we should change. But when I, you know, ask if when those times come up and that is raised, would, would a change in government truly address what is creating that, what is making that statement come forward? And oftentimes, it's not. You know, it, it's something that, it's really in the life of the town or even the administration. It's, it's a relatively short, uh, term problem or, or something politically driven, quite often politically driven, that leads to that, hey, maybe we need to take another look. But I, again, I just, I feel strongly that, that the form that we do have, and again, I do recognize and share some of those concerns that others have mentioned, uh, but, you know, again, I think in a lot of it has to do with the appointed board of finance that has three-year terms and the elected R T M. I believe that provides a lot of stability. Uh, so when there is a change in administration, uh, there is not a change in, in policy that, that puts us outside of that guardrail that I spoke of. Thank you.
Um, so I think, did you get through those three questions then, John? I think I heard kind of bits and pieces of answers.
I think I have answers to all my three questions, thank you.
Okay, good, all right. Um, so then I think Pam had a question next.
Oh, oh, I'm-
I actually, I actually just had a follow-up on what he was saying about the board of finance, if it was okay.
Yeah, and then Jay, I saw your hand.
Yeah, that just, just, so, uh, I just wanted to follow up on your appointed board of finance. You said it's three-year term, it's appointed by the board of selectmen, so is it staggered? Or they come in and out with the board of selectmen, how, how does that work?
No, uh, uh, I'm sorry, so there's, it's a six-member body, so that, that, yes, the two members, two members are appointed or reappointed every year. So, two members will be appointed for a three-year term. You know, say, you, the, the other four are, you know, uh, up, or the other, n- n- next year it's another two, so they're staggered. So everybody has a three-year term, but they're staggered, the six, the six-member body is staggered over six, uh, over three years. So you can't have-
And what about, you're not losing everybody all at once. What, um, um, what's the, the, your board of selectmen, are they two or four-year terms?
Board of selectmen is a two-year term.
Um, and how do you solicit your board of finance members? Like, how do you get, can, how, how do you find your candidates or your appointees rather?
And again, getting back to those stability, a, a, a number of our members of the board of finance have been there for, uh, a number of years. Um, actually, our, our longstanding chairman of the board of finance was a former finance director for the town of Branford. So, they, they've served for a while, they're, and again, getting back, so there's not a lot of turnover just because of, uh, change in administration. But the way they're typically, you know, like I said, it's two members, um, no, no party can have more than three members. No one party can have more than three members. Uh, oftentimes, the town committees will make recommendations who they would like to have appointed. Um, so the Republican town committee, if there's a vacancy on the, right, within the Republican caucus, uh, they'll put a name forward to the board, is same with the Democratic town committee, will often put a name forward if there's a vacancy. Or they would like to have somebody else reappointed. However, it's not a requirement that names go through the town committee. Actually, one of the things, uh, when I first was elected, um, just kind of reinforced that and really promoted that, uh, individuals who want to serve on any board of committee, um, don't necessarily have to wait and get the, uh, recommendation, uh, through a town committee, because I'm sure, you know, in Branford, the majority of our voters here are unaffiliated voters. Or even if they are Republican or Democrat, they, they may not be, uh, actively involved within the, the political parties. So we wanted to open it up and we've had a number of, uh, names come forward, uh, and, and those, I, I'll bring those recommendations to the board, uh, and, and the board, board of selectmen will, uh, act on those appointments.
And do they, are there term limits? Can they only serve for two appointments or is there a limit on that?
No, there's no term limits, uh, for, for any of the, um, boards or commissions.
Okay, so they can, and is it more, is your board of finance more a policy board? Or they, you know, adopt revenue and can adjust expenses?
Yeah, so, um, the, the board of finance has oversight of all of our, uh, investments, our, any of our funds, uh, the revenues, uh, budgeting the projected revenues, uh, setting the mill rate. Um, and through that budget process, um, they will, uh, make a recommendation of the overall budget, to the board of, to the R T M, excuse me. And, uh, as I said before, the R T M cannot exceed that number that is set by the board of finance. However, they can move money around from, uh, line item to a line item if they'd like, they just cannot exceed. And then the board of finance has the mill rate.
Got it, thank you very much.
Hi, everybody, this is Jay Gross, uh, thank you very much for participating tonight. This has been, uh, very, very interesting and educational. Uh, my question though is for Attorney Mednick. And, uh, has to do with the functional role, if you will, of the board of finance. It's, it's sort of surprised me that it's a little bit all over the place. So, my question to you is for those towns that are running with a town council. So, regardless of whether or not they have a mayor or a town manager, the board of finance apparently can be elected, appointed, or they don't have one. It's, that function is incorporated somewhere else. So, in your experience or with, with, uh, statistics that you have, is there any general rule of thumb? Uh, generally, and for towns, uh, operating with town councils, uh, either with the town manager or mayor, do they generally, uh, have a appointed, elected board of finance or is it incorporated, uh, within?
Yeah. Can I just, uh, hold, hold one second? If, do, you have the question there, Attorney Mednick? Or, if, if we don't have any more questions for the panel, they've been very generous with their time and we could get into a discussion among the group and with our council. Um, and, 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 no, I don't mean any disrespect, Jay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think that in the interest of utilizing these folks here, if, if we could table that-
I'll, I'll remember the question and answer it, Jay, so.
Okay, I, I apologize, Jay, but I just want to be respectful of our guests and they've given so much of their time. And, um, so, did we have any more questions for the panel? Uh, John Matola. You're, we don't hear you yet.
I saw Chris raise his hand first and I, I've asked questions already, so I would let Chris go first.
Oh, I missed that, okay.
Thank you, John, I think it's a quick one, uh, for Mr. Pasquarela. If I'm, remember right from the material that, um, Steve sent around ahead of time, your mayor has a veto right over the town council?
Yes, yes.
Is that, uh, is that, what do you think about that? Is that, is that used often? Is it, is it a good sort of, uh?
It's a check and balance.
Balance, yeah.
Um, there is, you know, in, in local government, there isn't a third branch, there's only really two branches, executive and legislative. And by having the veto power, as it were, the council, of course, can override the veto. Uh, with a two-thirds body, we have fifteen members of the council, so you would need ten votes to override. Yeah, man, I think it strengthens the mayor's hand. Ironically, I don't, the, in the last four years, I think we've had maybe a, a number of vetoes. But there had not been a, um, a veto of, uh, of a budget or legislative. I think it was only used once since nineteen sixty-five up until two thousand and sixteen, believe it or not, or seventeen. And then there was like four or five, may have lost count. And I'd say it was about a fifty-fifty split, uh, between the, um, overrides versus sustains. They were all on budgets. So, I happen to think it's important because you really don't want any single body to have more authority than the other. If you didn't have the veto, the mayor would present the budget to the council and then the council will vote it in, and that's that. You know, if the mayor has, the mayor has responsibility for executing that budget, if they were in complete disagreement with what the council had put through, they should have the opportunity to veto it, and then the council has the opportunity to override or sustain. So, i- it really is just a check or balance. Because there isn't an arbiter in a situation such as that.
Okay.
The answer to your question is yes, the mayor's veto power, the council has the right to override.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
All right, and then, uh, Mr. Matola. With it, John, you're gonna have to-
I, I apologize. Real quickly, do, do any of the municipalities here have a, um, a permanent legal department with staff attorneys? Or are you a legal counsel just, uh, appointed by the mayor or executive, chief executive?
New Britain is, uh, has a corporation council, um, it's part of the charter. Um, the corporation council is appointed, the single corporation council is appointed by the mayor and approved by the council, and then there's a full-time staff of two to three attorneys who handle all the other aspects of, of, of the, they're full-time. Corporation council, or is it not full-time?
Corporation counsel, or is it not full-time? It's a very, it's a, it's almost a stipend amount in terms of what, what that corporation counsel does. About thirty-six thousand dollars, I think, last time I looked.
In, in Manchester, there is a, the, the Board of Directors really appoints two people. One is a general manager, and one is a town attorney, appointed by the Board, by the council. And the town attorney answers to the Board and the council. There is a full-time staff attorney that reports to the town attorney, with whom the manager works very closely. And there are other part-time attorneys that are on, on retainer, if you will, to handle specialty issues. And all labor work, labor council work is farmed out to specialized labor council, because it's such a specialized area.
In Hampden, we have a charter position town attorney. It's, again, appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the council. The town attorney is, reports to the mayor, and as in other major department heads, the mayor serves at the pleasure of the mayor, so to speak. We have two part-time town attorneys, one for the land use commissions, and the other is generally just, is an assistant to the town attorney. We have one paralegal, and I don't know, you know, we always seems to be a little overwhelmed, but I never quite understood that. But the, everything else is outside council. The majority of outside council, obviously, is, is labor. And then we also have outside council for, excuse me, for assessment appeals. And that act, and that actually costs, can, can become a significant expense. The Legislative Council, well, Steve works with the Legislative Council. I don't know if he's formalized as a counsel to the council, or just an attorney to the council, what have you. But, you know, that's indicative of the way we're structured, where the, where the council and the, you know, the administration are separate. And the council, you need a, that was my idea to bring Steve in a few years ago. We needed a, we needed our own voice.
It's, it's interesting, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and I, I know I want to keep it to the members of the panel, but it's instructive. Hampden, I believe, is the only town in the state of Connecticut. When I did the charter ten years ago, that's when I found out about the council to the council is actually in the charter. I don't think I've seen that in any other community in the state. And I remember asking Jim, what is that? And he said, well, I'd like you to be that. So it was in, it was in the charter for years.
And you wrote that charter.
What's that? It's, it's the right, it's the right-to-work, it's the right-to-work charter for Steve Mednick.
Sorry, I'm sorry, that was not appropriate, so.
Only the lawyers laughed at that, Brian.
I apologize.
I thank you for your, your answering the question. Thank you very much.
Okay. Did we have another question? I have a question, but I don't want to cut in front of anyone if I missed a hand. And this would be to particularly the First Selectman in Cosgrove, but any others who might want to shed some light. We, like Branford, have a three-person Board of Selectmen, and what we've heard in, from, you know, a lot of the testimony, we started this endeavor last fall, and that the Board of Selectmen generally, you know, it's two to one with some exceptions, and, and very, they're outliers. And they always vote, they're kind of a, you know, they're a rubber stamp, for lack of a better term. And the, the functions are, you know, somewhat limited. Do you have that experience in Branford? And could you shed some light on what maybe I'm missing in terms of, like, the usefulness of the Board of Selectmen is? And I'll do respect to, I mean, I'm not trying to, it's more the office, not any particular person.
Right, I mean, certainly the Board, because as I mentioned, as I explained, what we have with the Board of Finance and RTM, there's other bodies that have a lot of purview. I think, you know, that Branford sounds very similar in terms of what we heard from First Selectman Rosenthal, and how, it's the same type of things that had to go before them. However, appropriations typically do not, but any land transfers, contracts, all the appointments, we are the appointing body for the town. I would say, you know, as far as how the votes come down, I'd say the ma- majority of them are unanimous. I would say there's very rarely where there's a opposition, you know, something that's, comes down as just, you know, party lines. I mean, there has been, I'm not gonna, but by and large, it, it doesn't. So I don't think we have that criticism here in Branford as, well, you know, the, the Board, you know, to have it, it doesn't matter what comes before them, because it's always gonna just be the First Selectmen, and, you know, the, the party that's in, in charge is gonna have the, the final say. We do allow public comment, so there, there have been times where, you know, I, I think votes have come down to based on that public, where, again, where, with, even within, among the parties, there may have been a difference, so it's not a rubber stamp.
Well, I guess maybe let me ask it in a different way then. Are there any times where there's a, a vote of two to one where an issue doesn't carry on the Board of Selectmen?
Oh, well, for bid waivers, it requires majority. For two to one, are you saying, are you asking?
When it's voted down, anything? I mean, so even unanimous or party line, I'm just saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are there times when a vote is actually-
Yeah, so, so something got voted down two to one. Yeah, I, I, I believe there, there has been, there has been some votes, again. You know, I, there, it's, yeah, of course-
I don't mean to put you on the spot here, I'm not, I'm not trying to dissect Branford. I'm more talking about Fairfield, but it seems like either two to one or three to zero, it's always just kind of moving issues forward, perfunctory.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I think, no, but there has been some issues that have come before us that, yes, we've, we've actually, it, it have voted. And, and, and sometimes there'll be something that'll come forward in it for, for whatever reason, through discussion. We, we vote unanimous to, to not move it forward.
Okay.
There, there has been times that where we actually have not moved some things forward that we've actually, I brought to the committee through discussion, so.
All right, well, fair enough. I appreciate that, didn't mean to, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot there.
No, 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 I'm sure you, I, listen, I, I, I can bring some people on this meeting that will certainly say, oh, it's a rubber stamp, we all-
Okay. Any other questions? And on that note. Well, let, you know, I, I again want to thank all of you for, you have been extremely generous with your time, and it's been very informative, I think. John Wynn made a good point, I'm probably gonna have to go back and re-watch portions of this, because it's a, it's a lot of useful information, and kind of get, get and take a second look at it. But Steve, I don't know if you want to have some party comments.
I just want to thank all of these volunteers. We went about an hour longer than I promised them, and I owe them all. I expect to have to repay the favor that they've given me sometime in the future. I say that publicly, so thank you.
We do, we all-
We'll send you the bill, Steve, don't worry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, a pleasure meeting, everybody. Good luck with your decision.
Thank you, thank you for having us, appreciate it.
So long.
So, moving on to our, we have an outstanding question on the table from Mr. Gross. And Jay, I, I very much appreciate you indulging me and allowing to move that question to the end of the conversation, so thank you, and, um-
No, actually, actually, thank you, it would have been, it was a, it was the correct call, so.
No, I mean, I didn't want to cut it short, and it sounded like it would maybe elicit some discussion.
It's a great question, and it's all over the place, Jay. And what I, I'll, I'll talk briefly, because I know it's getting late for all of you, about it. It's all over the place. If you take a look going down from the top, Bridgeport does not have a Board of Finance. Stanford does. Stanford has almost like a bicameral legislative body. They have a Board of Finance and a Board of Representatives, and they serve an interesting function. The largest cities, New Haven does not. In fact, I was one of the leaders of getting rid of the Board of Finance in New Haven thirty years ago. Hartford does not have a Board of Finance, Waterbury does not have one. Norwalk, like Greenwich, has a Board of Estimate, which is their Board of Finance. So they, they've got one, and that's elected. Danbury, I don't know. New Britain has the appointed, West Hartford is town management, I don't know what they have. I can go down and take a look at it. Hampden does not, although as Jim Pascarella pointed out in the charter last year, we created this Finance Commission, which is a very interesting body. Waterbury has a, a, an audit agency that we created in lieu of a Board of Finance. So it's all over the place. As you start getting into municipalities our size, may, the mayor pointed out, and it's a great story, her depression era story, about how they created that provision that mandates a strong Board of Finance. Manchester, I, I believe, has one, but I think it's appointed, if I'm not mistaken. So, i- it's, it's a mixed bag throughout the state. And some are appointed, some are elected.
Any thoughts-
Yeah, sorry.
Any thoughts on pros and cons of it being, I mean, I, I like the fact that there's an independent body. Not so sure of the benefits, pros and cons of it being elected or appointed.
The, well, we can talk about, I wanted to talk about the next meeting, because we should probably start to have a dialogue on what we want to do. But my initial thought on it is what I've tried to do with appointed boards where there is a specialty need. You know, and this is not taking into context your culture and your history, but just broadly, a broad application. So I'm not applying it to Fairfield at this moment. And that is, when you have a finance board, if you can have a board that has different categories of expertise that you would be seeking to place on the board. We did that with the Finance Audit Review Commission in Waterbury in their post-state takeover era, and that's worked out very, very well for a city that had historic financial problems. And for the last eighteen years since we put that, almost twenty years since we put that in place, that's worked reasonably well. The Finance Commission we were creating in Hampden, which will probably survive this new charter revision, was the same thing, two appointees by the mayor, two by the legislative body, and there would be specific expertise, plus geographic representation throughout the town to try to get the benefit of kind of a neighborhood representation. The other side of the, the coin is, and John Matola could probably speak to this since he's on the board, is that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. You know, that if you have a historically useful entity, you know, you, and, and it's really the, one of, one of the points that Jamie Cosgrove made, and it's really one of the reasons I invited him, because I loved, I loved in the fact that their charter talked about, when they moved from the town manager, the town, the town meeting to the RTM, they wanted to have a modern form of government that worked for their community. I thought it was one of the most wonderful openings in a charter that I've seen. Now, that charter's a very small charter. I'm not sure where all their government is. The Board of Selectmen doesn't even show up in their charter. I think it's in their ordinances. So the answer is, it really depends on your culture, and, and what you want to, what you want to do. The way we created the Finance Commission in the last charter in Hampden was because there was a strong move to move toward professional management. And my view was and remains that that kind of move from representative government, from whether it's an RTM former government, mayor council former government, to a management former government, which is very different, is not something you can do in charter revision. It's something charter revision may trigger, to do a massive study that I think you need to do, and it's something that a subsequent charter commission would have to approve, because ultimately, it has to be part of your charter. And so what we did in Hampden is we found a middle ground by endorsing both the concept of professional management, not a town manager, but a chief administrative officer, or chief operating officer, and this Finance Commission as a way of mediating and providing assistance, professional assistance to the elected officials in that context. And that's what they did there. What you do in Fairfield could be totally different. And so it really is a matter of how, how you operate from town to town. I mean, if you want, I could try to invite some people who specifically focus on these issues. But I wasn't focusing, focusing on Board of Finance, I wasn't sure that was a real issue at this juncture.
Right, no, I, I, I think you've answered my question. I don't, I don't necessarily, you need to do a deep dive on Board of Finance structure specifically. Unless, unless the other commissioners feel different. I guess not.
No, I, I don't, I don't see any.
Right.
So I know, before we leave, I just wanted to ask, with your indulgence, Mr. Chair, at our next meeting, I think you want to have public comment, because I think you wanted to have the public speak, after listening to the, the last two meetings that we've had. I also wanted to suggest at that meeting that I try to provide a framework for discussion based on the last two meetings. And what it will look like, it will look like a, a menu, you know, column A and column B, or column C, I don't know how many columns there will be, but the different issues that have been raised, and how you feel about them, to see whether or not we need to, we're moving in, the commission is moving in any kind of direction, whether we want to maintain the status quo, or whether you want to move in another direction that was discussed this evening, or discussed at the meeting two weeks ago. But I thought if I provided a framework, I tried to give you a lot of stuff to show you different charter provisions in their totality, on the executive side and the legislative side. I could provide more of that, you know, more of that if you'd like. I didn't, I think, yeah, I think where there is veto authority, veto authority was stated. Hampden has veto authority, New Britain has veto authority, smaller towns do not. If you move toward a, and I think one of the things Scott Shanley talked about, was regardless of your system, you need to make sure there's kind of unitary appointment authority. I thought that was a very important point that he made. And, you know, but if you're moving toward an executive legislative model, you might think about a veto in, even in a small, so, you know, a First Selectman, RTM system that begins to look more like a, an executive legislative system, you may talk about a veto mechanism in that, in that structure. So my recommendation is that I try to give you a framework for analysis and thought on these issues. And I could provide, and if there's any additional information that you're looking for, please let me know, and I'll provide it.
Yeah, I have some general thoughts, but Pam had her hand up, so.
Just, here, here's my feedback on that. If you could get us that framework so we could look at it and start to think about it, that would be fabulous. I personally would like us to have that conversation in public and hear thoughts and direction of where we're going before we entertain another public, public comment session. I do not want to have a public comment session and not have stated on the record where we think we're going. I, I just don't think it's useful at this time, because we're, we don't know what we're doing. All we did was gather information. So, I, I prefer to hear from the public once they get a sense of what we're doing.
So we have the framework discussion and not the public comment at the next meeting?
That would be- That would be my preference and then do the public comment when we're, after we've gotten, gotten through our framework, they can come back the next meeting and give, and give input.
John Matola.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I think the next meeting really needs to be a working meeting with our, our group. And then after that, have the public hearing. Cause I think we're ready to start talking about it. And I think the public is gonna wanna hear what we have to say. And then after that, let's hear from the public.
That makes sense, yeah. I think uh.
Does that work for you, Steve?
I, I, I really think it's time to roll up the sleeves. I, I agree completely.
Yeah, I do too.
But I, we had the public comment there that was, that was.
The placeholder, yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that uh, that I was not ignoring what the um, session was. No, I think, I think we really need to start rolling up our sleeves and uh, and you need to start giving me direction because pretty soon it's gonna be March. So I've gotta start. If you, if you wanna go in a direction, um, we have to start drafting. One thing I do wanna say, and I'm gonna call Dan Salerno, um, on this, is you can accomplish a lot in a charter revision. Um, uh, I, we, I've done that many, many times. We did an awful lot in Middletown, um, uh, last year. And the town where they had been resistant, they lost questions. We won every question on the ballot last November. Um, so you can accomplish a lot. You can accomplish a lot of controversial things, but you can accomplish a lot of restructuring. Um, uh, John Matola may remember, it's ten years ago now and I hope I get another shot at it, uh, where we did what I thought was the best charter I've ever worked on was Bridgeport Reconstruction that we did ten years ago. And that lost on what, and, and, uh, and Ellen was absolutely right. That lost in the Obama reelection year where we had a record turnout and because the mayor wanted to turn around the appointment authority on the board of education, eh, there was a huge minority vote that voted down the board of education and voted every else, everything else down. All the terrific things that we did were shot down. So it's really a question of how you manage it um, and, and, and how you sell it. And the two last things, one is a lot of towns don't use this, but there is a a provision of the statutes that permits a charter commission and the community to create an explanatory text that the, it's not a political document. It is simply an explanatory text that lays out everything that's in the charter. So we have our questions that go on the ballot and the explanatory text goes through and explains everything and is posted at the polling place because it's not a political document. Uh, you could publish it anywhere you want. You could put it on the internet. Uh, and then the second thing that, that Danny did talk about, um, and, and I started this in New Britain, I always advise my commissions to remember that they need to develop a political committee uh, once they're out of business, um, working with members of the political community on both sides of the aisle, on all sides of the aisle, depending on how many parties you've got, um, to make sure there's an advocacy group uh, for the charter in November. So, um, uh, I'm glad Danny brought that up because that's, I, I don't think I have mentioned that to you, but that's one of the things I do talk to charter commission members about.
I like that.
And I'll try to get a framework out to you next week so you have time, uh, before the meeting to, to digest and think about it.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, no, I agree, I agree. The placeholder, there was a placeholder for the public hearing, but you, you are all correct that we should have something for them to, you know, kind of comment on, you know, similar to our, our plan of what we were going to address. And so we've, we've tackled some pretty big topics now. We do need to get into the discussion and see where, where we're at and make some decisions to a direction so that uh, we can head down that path. So I think we're at junctures that we can't go any further without making those decisions into, as to form. So. Any other comments on this matter? Anybody feel differently that we should be doing something different next meeting? John? Was that a thumbs up or you're just?
Thumbs up. I think we're, we're making the right decision.
Alright, well, I think then um, again, thanks again, Steve, for putting this together. Look forward to getting that um, that working document for us to use and to, for, for our next meeting. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if there's no other business. Pam Moos, Marlene Seconds, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Have a good couple weeks.
Night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.